We'll call the meeting to order. Madam Secretary, please take role.
Role call. Madam President, all five board members are here.
Next, we'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Well, we'd like to begin by welcoming everybody who's out in the audience, especially our students who've come to help support the workshop. You look extremely serious. Some of you look even a little nervous. Relax. It'll be a fun evening. We're excited. And somehow, we all know you through a friend. My boys keep coming home and saying, "Oh, do you know so-and-so's going to be there?" And a friend of ours, of anonymous, said, "Oh, so-and-so's going to be there." So somehow, I know most of you, just, you know, by the degrees of separation. Kevin Bacon. We also want to celebrate our nation's veterans. Tomorrow is Veterans Day, and we had a great celebration over at the Tarkington Center this afternoon. And, well, if anybody in the audience is one of our fellow veterans, thank you for serving. And on behalf of the board, we'd like to thank all of those who might be listening sometime in the future. Thank you for your service. And with that, we'll jump to consent. May I get a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have our workshop topic. Dr. Wall?
Very excited to have students here this evening to highlight some of the work that's been done in the World Language and Social Studies program evaluations. I'm going to let Dr. Dudley introduce some of her staff as we begin this adventure with our students this evening. Thanks for being here.
Great. Thank you. And this evening, we are very excited that we have students and teachers and two supervisors of learning to share the great work that they have done over the last, over last year on program evaluation for both social studies and world language program evaluation. So first, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Rachel Seaver, who is at the podium, and Mrs. Anna Royo, who they will start this off and introduce the rest of our participants.
Thank you so much for having us here this evening. As Dr. Dudley noted, I am a supervisor of learning here at ESC, and one of my most fun activities that I get to engage in is collaborating with our world language teachers and the students in those classes. And so, I'll be talking with you a little bit about our world language program, and then Mrs. Anna Royo will be here to talk about social studies. I'll be introducing our very special guests in just a moment. So, as you are familiar with, this is our continuous improvement cycle. Tonight, we'll be talking with you about the program evaluation recommendations, which will lead us into curriculum development, material selection, and then next year, new implementation of materials. So digging a little bit deeper into our program evaluation process, last fall, we convened a committee of program evaluation members, and that committee included teachers, parents, students, and administrators that worked hard over the course of the school year to review the research standards and requirements related to the disciplines. And then, they formulated critical questions of inquiry. These questions guided the program evaluation process. In the case of world language, the critical questions really focused on our six through 12 world language program. As some of you may be familiar, we did have an elementary world language program. The last year that that program was in place was in the 2009-2010 school year with Spanish at the elementary schools. That part of the program was not included in the critical questions that guided the program evaluation process, mainly because that program was focused on providing students with an understanding of the culture related to the language of Spanish, but not so much focused on language acquisition. And so, this program evaluation was largely focused around evaluating our program and the proficiency of language that students were achieving through engagement in our program. And so, once we established our critical questions of inquiry, then we delved into the data collection process. And the committee determined what data they felt like would be important to collect and began the work of collecting the data, then bringing that data back to the committee for analysis to identify strengths, concerns, and trends, and then formulate recommendations. And those recommendations we'll be sharing with you this evening. Part of the process is also preparing a written report of the evaluation, and that written report will be available online tomorrow for the entire Carmel High School's community, and actually, anyone that would like to read it. And so, I know Dr. Dudley would be happy to share that report with you, and you can access it tomorrow online as well, for both world language and social studies. So as Ann and I began talking about our literature review findings and recommendations from our committee's work in both social studies and world language, we realized that there were really some common themes emerging, and we saw a lot of crossover in the work that our committees had done. Even though the committees worked completely separately over the course of last year, there were definitely some commonalities that emerged. And for this reason, we wanted to provide you with an opportunity to have a window into the types of experiences that are taking place in both social studies and world language at Carmel High School. We also have these programs at our middle schools and then social studies at our elementary schools, but this evening, we'll be highlighting some of the experiences that are taking place at the high school. So by the time you leave tonight, we hope that you will have a glimpse into the types of experiences that are taking place on a daily basis in our schools, and also see how both of these disciplines are really shifting to meet the needs of 21st century learners. So for this evening, we're going to begin by inviting you down in just a moment to sit at the tables, and you'll have an opportunity to reflect on your past experiences as a learner when you were in school in a world language or a social studies class. And then, we'll have you participate in an authentic experience, and we'll have the students join you at the tables, and we'll have two teachers come up to share a snippet of one of the lessons that's a part of a larger unit that really exemplifies some of the recommendations from our program evaluation work. And then, Mrs. Royo and I will come back up at the end and synthesize some of the key shifts that hopefully you witnessed in your lesson, but also how this all fits together with our recommendations. So at this time, if you would like to come on down and find your name, we have place And then, I'll be passing it over to Mrs. Royo.
So as Rachel just shared with you, one of our goals for you this evening is for you to be able to reflect on the past. And in the world of social studies, we felt that this was apropos for this evening because one of the common themes that you'll see in our standards K through 12 is that historians are constantly reflecting on the past in order to inform their present. So this is also ties in very nicely with the social studies program evaluation process because that is, in fact, what we did. We looked at our past practices and what our research tells us in order to inform and better understand our present. So we're going to articulate this for you today through first grade social studies standards. This is actually a screenshot from our first grade curriculum where students engage in understanding what was school-like long ago. So we are going to take you through this first grade experience for a few moments. And one of the things that the students in the first grade program do is they think, they imagine that they found a box buried in their schoolyard that was buried more than 100 years ago, and they start to think about what might be in this time capsule, and that in this lesson, they'll learn what school was like in the past. So we would like for you to reflect on what school was like for you in the past in the area of social studies and world language. At your tables, you have a circle map. You have two maps, actually. One circle defines what social studies education practices were like when you were a student, and the other circle is for world language experiences. So for example, you're going to use your black pen, because we'll be using the red pen later, and you'll collaborate with your teammate there. And you're going to think about what was school like for you when you were a student in social studies, and what was it like for world language? So for example, in my personal experience, I spent most of my high school years outlining chapters every week with a test on Friday. And when I was studying Spanish in my high school years, we did a lot of grammar practice in workbooks. So with your partner, talk about, and one person be the recorder, what was school like when you were in school for social studies and world language?
[laughter]
Okay. Okay.
be really excited and surprised at the differences in our social studies and world language education programs from how you experienced them as a student. So at this point, we're going to learn a little bit more about what life is like today for our students at Carmel High School. And we're going to be, I'm going to be asking Mr. James Ziegler to come on up. Mr. Ziegler is a social studies teacher at the high school. He teaches U.S. history, history of the Americas, and he's also an instructional coach for the social studies department. And later in a little bit, we'll have Ms. Lisa Carroll. She will be our French teacher representing world language. At this point in time, I would love for our social studies students to find your seat in between our board members, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Ziegler. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you guys very much for giving us the opportunity to come in and meet with you guys today. So give you a second to get settled down here.
Okay. So as far as it goes, again, I'm James Ziegler. Yeah, teach U.S. history, IB history of the Americas. And so, today, we're going to focus on something I actually did with my U.S. history students. In our second unit, our main focus for this unit, or I guess a little snippet of it, was on industrialization. Our guiding question for the entire unit is what is the cost of progress, and this kind of project fit within the context of that unit? Now, just to give you a little background in terms of my philosophy of teaching, one of the big things for me as a history teacher is to get my students to see, history is not a set of isolated events, but instead is something that is interwoven and connected with each other, in that, you know, I want my students to see how World War I led to World War II, or how World War II planted the seeds for the Cold War, or in this case, how did industrialization kind of plant the seeds for unionization, and how that connects to today. And so, that's kind of my philosophy when I go about teaching. Also, I want my students to see our learning as relevant to their lives. And so, as much as possible, I always try to connect what we're doing in our history classes to something that's going on in today's world. And so, we're going to kind of get to that point and talk about how the minimum wage tied in with this unit. And so, just to give you a little background before I give you a little hands-on experience, when I start planning my units or my projects, the first thing I always take into consideration is just the standards that I want to make sure that we cover. And so, for this one, obviously, you know, the content standards are what I focus on first, trying to pick out, all right, what are the standards in terms of industrialization and unionization that I need to make sure I cover from a content standpoint? After I identify those content standards, then, like, you know, what spurred industrialization in the U.S., what was the effects of it, and what led to the growth of unions in the United States? My next goal, then, is also to identify, well, what are the common core standards that could fit in here? As you know, Indiana's adopted its own set of common core, and so I try to figure out in social studies, how can I build in the reading, writing skills, as well as some of the others, like, see, standard seven, you know, conducting research projects, as well as working on their delivery, their speaking skills? And so, that's the second step I go through in the process, you know, what are the content standards, then? How can I incorporate the common core into my projects? After I identify the standards, then, my next goal is translating those standards into learning targets that I want my students to be able to achieve and know that when we get out of this unit, hopefully, they understand these targets and are proficient or masters as far as those go. And so, on this project, those learning targets translated to, again, identifying the factors of industrialization and unionization, but also then tying some of those learning targets into today, and getting my students to compare and contrast the working conditions of the past to present working conditions, as well as having them deliver those, their knowledge and understanding of those topics through different mediums. So writing a letter to a representative either at the state or national level, and then, you know, presenting their findings to their classmates through a Socratic seminar. And so, that was my next step in the process, was identifying the learning targets. Once I have the learning targets down, then, my next goal is always, all right, now plan out the unit or the project or what, the lesson, whatever it might be. And so, for this project, we had multiple steps. The first step of the process was just a history guide and quiz that the students worked on within their groups. They were in groups of four. And so, essentially, this is where we covered a lot of the content. In working with their classmates, they uncovered, you know, what were the factors that led to industrialization? What impact did that have socially, economically? Who were the captains of industry? People like the Vanderbilts and Rockefellers and, you know, the Carnegie's of the world. And then, you know, taking a look at, you know, why did unions begin forming? What were the causes? Why were they not often successful early on in the late 19th, early 20th century, taking a look at the response of employers and government to it? And so, that was the first step, was the history component. After that, then, was the budget section. This case is where we started applying it more to today. And so, that I researched what the current minimum wage level was, and then figure out, based off that minimum wage, if they were working a full-time job, how much would that equate to in terms of a monthly salary before any tax or anything like that was taken out? After they figured out how much they'd make per month, they then had to go and contact rental companies, utility companies, you know, as well as their parents, I think, for some of the information on phone bills, car insurance costs, and figure out, would they be able to survive off a minimum wage salary if they're working a full-time job? And so, that was the next step, and a lot of them found that they weren't really able to do that. So after they got the budget and got a context for how much a minimum wage job really is worth, they then started conducting the research on the minimum wage. And so, they had to do an annotated bibliography where they found at least three sources arguing for the minimum wage being raised, and at least three sources arguing against raising the minimum wage. And they did that annotated bibliography, submitted them, and then, after they completed that section of the research, their next step was to actually take a position. Did they think the minimum wage should be raised? And, you know, convey that message by writing a letter to one of our representatives, again, either at the state level or at the national level. And the culminating event, then, for it was to take their findings and their position that they wrote about in their letter and bring it to class and have a class-wide discussion, just so we could share our ideas as far as it goes and what they learned. And so, that's what our focus is going to be on. Give you a little short snippet into it. It'll only be about 10 minutes, maybe a little less here, but you'll get a feel for kind of what took place. And so, in my class, I'm going to go ahead and pass these little talking chips around. So people want to grab a few of them. There's different ways you could run a Socratic seminar. Some people do inner circle, outer circle. Other people do talking chips. And so, this is just a way for me to gauge who's participating in the discussion, as well as let students in the class know when one of their classmates kind of wants to chime in in the discussion. And so, you all are more than welcome to chime in if you'd like, but also, students, you know, are prepared for it. And so, one of the things, as the Socratic seminar goes on, you know, I always tell them, this is not a test of memorization. I encourage my students to have their notes out, any research they did, prepared, ready to go. You know, I try to tell them, stick as much as possible to the topic currently being discussed. If they need to make note and return something later, they could do so. Again, use their talking chips. Sometimes, the discussions get a little heated, and we have some chips flying in rapidly, but it's usually pretty good. It's good to see the passion. And so, just make sure you guys are listening. Again, you know, don't feel like you have to be debating the whole time, but ask me questions if they want to get more clarification on something a classmate said, and then always, you know, making sure that they speak up and be respectful. And so, with that being said, without further ado, want to give you guys, again, a little snippet of what this looks like in the classroom. And so, again, our guiding question that we use to start off our Socratic seminar was, should we raise the minimum wage? So I'll hand the floor over to the students here and give you guys a little bit, and I'll give you a little heads up when we got about a minute to go.
I based my letter to the representative, raising the minimum wage would kind of reduce the incentive for low-wage workers to get a higher education. And I found through research that 60% of the people living in poverty don't have a job, so it would just make it harder for them to find one.
I just wanted to kind of make something clear, I guess. Minimum wage jobs were never meant to be a living wage. So although it is, it's been events that we were not able to live off of a minimum wage job, it was never meant to be a living wage. It was merely a stepping stone to gain education and to have a higher level and higher-paying job.
So on a more personal note, I have a couple of points to make. But my parents, my dad was going through college at the time, and my mom actually wasn't working at the time, and we were living off of a minimum wage with five children. It is possible. It is hard, but again, like you were saying, that the minimum wage wasn't meant to be lived off of for a lifetime. It was meant to be like the first rung of a ladder. You start, and then you start climbing up, and you start working hard. And my family worked hard and climbed up that ladder of success. You know, our country is based on supply and demand. People who are willing to supply enough money and time to get a college degree, they're going to be the ones that are going to get higher-paying jobs. And that's just kind of how society works. Also, I found in my research that, you know, many believe that an increase in minimum wage would spur greater consumer activity, but it actually isn't always a good thing in the long-term interest of a society because investment is key to long-term economic efficiency. So reducing these savings and spurring this growth of money and giving people more money and money, that actually would probably decrease economic success.
I have to disagree with that on both points, actually, because, for one, I mean, it's not proven, but it's theoretical. If people are paid more, then they tend to spend more. So if they are given more money through a higher-paying job, then they tend or theoretically should be putting more money back into the economy, which will help stimulate and grow our economy. And then also, on the basis of education, some people do not have the ability or the capability to pursue a higher education. So for some people, living off minimum wage is all they have, and they have to make it work. So by raising that, we're helping those people that are less fortunate to become more fortunate, to be able to support themselves and their families and just their livelihood.
Also, it is difficult for some people to find a job. Some reasons include that they don't have reliable transportation, it's hard to stay clean and neat when you're poor, and they don't have a home address so they can fill out applications to get the job. And also, keep in mind that it's not possible for some because some are old or mentally ill or disabled, which a lot of employers would look down upon.
So what do you think the problem would be, then? Is it more of, you know, people don't have enough money, or is it they don't have enough opportunities for education or have enough government support?
I'll kind of say, well, I think, really, they don't, any of those points, really, they don't have enough. I think some of them may not have the opportunities because they are being paid so little, they don't have those opportunities to really get a higher-paying job. Because, I mean, except for some, it is a stepping stone, like, hey, work up your ladder. But some of those people, they've never had an opportunity to do that, and they've always been pushed down, and they've never really had an opportunity at all to really work their way up the ladder, and that's why we really need to help push these, the minimum wage up. So, I mean, it's going to help, you know, stimulate the economy, help for a better standard of living, and inflation rate's not going to be a problem because we're always going to account for that, and then, yeah.
So about, I'm putting this in the context of what the franchisee has to worry about. So it's understandable that, I mean, people need more money, but when you think about it, people overlook the inflation. So franchisees have a certain amount, like, labor costs. So as the minimum wage is increased, those labor costs, they're not going to have the amount of capital to give back to all those employees, so they're going to have to make job cuts. So those people who need that extra money are going to be out of a job. So, and the other thing about this is, as the, as it increases, the salaries increase, so do the products. So it's, as Milton Friedman put it, who's an influential economist, it's discriminatory against the poor, and it harms the people it's intended to help.
I'm going to have to disagree with you. A review of 64 studies regarding minimum wage found no significant effect on employment. This is from well-established organizations such as the National Division of Economic Research. These studies used the most comprehensive data available in cutting edge econometric techniques to control for extraneous variables such as geographic effect and changes in the stock market. More than 600 economists, which seven of them won Nobel Prizes, signed a petition in support.
Okay. I'll try to wrap up here in next minute or so, so if anybody wants to make some kind of final statements here?
I have to agree with Rachel on that. According to Jared Bernstein, a former chief economist for Vice President Joseph Biden, Jr., he said that while the increase is expected to cause some job losses, the number of workers who would get a raise probably those displaced. So according to him, like, 98.5% of the potentially affected workers would benefit from this proposal of an increased minimum wage. So 98.5% of helping people, I mean, that's a really, that's a really good odds. So I think, you know, why not do something that has the potential to help all of those people? Even if it can't help everyone, it helps the majority, which is what we're after, so.
And I guess the last comment I want to make is, you know, I do agree that with the raise of prices in the economy in general, you know, I think that maybe a raise in minimum wage would be acceptable to help the 0.3% of workers living on the minimum wage, adult workers, out of the, all the population of the United States. But I also think that, you know, just like the phrase of- But I also think that, you know, just like the phrase of, you know, give a man a fish and he'll eat for a day, or if you teach a man to fish, you know, he'll be able to eat for the rest of his life. It's the same thing, is we may give these people more money, and it may help them in the short run, but I think the best thing that will help these people in the long run, these people who are suffering in poverty, is better in-house training, better education, better leadership, better funding, and things like that. Because I want to help these people, but I think there's better ways than giving them $15.
How do you propose we do that, though? Like, not everyone's open to education. I know in some European countries, they offer free college education, so how would you propose that? Us as Americans, as a government, go about doing that?
Like, just increase in education in general, or promoting it?
Any of your points, how would we, like, like, our first step towards doing that? Because I like your ideas, I just, what's the first step to doing that? Because we don't have free education, it's very, very expensive, even middle-class families can't always afford it, so how do you propose we go about?
Well, I'm not even saying college education, I'm saying high school education, middle school, elementary school. You start promoting it at an earlier level, you start giving, you know, government starts giving these, you know, more opportunities, and I think that would just help in general, because these families, you know, a lot of people, they develop almost like a break and where they don't think they can reach over the poverty level. They think that the only thing acceptable for them is to have these minimum wage jobs, when really, they have so much potential and they can go so far. You know, some people need help, everybody needs help. But I think as long as people, we're giving these people more help and promoting it at an earlier age, then that would help.
Okay, sneak it in real quick, Palmer, then we got to wrap up there.
Yeah, just one more thing. WGU is an organization, and it's a, for college, and it's a low-expense education. And you can also do various things that are less expensive. I mean, you could do classes at night. There are a lot of other ways to get a good education without the despair, like, the price and the expense.
Okay. So hopefully that gave you guys kind of a little feel now. Obviously, we dragged it out over the course of an entire class period, and we had a lot more people kind of partaking in it. But just kind of to wrap up, just kind of my thoughts for in the future, as I kind of would, can you look to grow and improve with the project. Couple of things I would just change, is just based off feedback from students, maybe doing like two separate groups, doing an inner circle, outer circle activity, rather than having the chips. That way, you know, more kids had an opportunity to speak more than just two, three times over the course of a class period. The other thing, too, I think I would, I'm gonna add to this project in the future, is just doing a post-right activity. So kids could kind of review through and see, did their opinions change on this issue after hearing what their classmates said, or is it the same and why? And so, again, I really do appreciate you guys giving us the opportunity to share what we do in the classroom with you guys, and thank you again to our student representatives for coming in today. So, thank you.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
When you do this type of Socratic seminar, are all the students participating at one time? Do you have two small groups going on simultaneously? Or how do you?
Yeah, so this year, when we did it, it was, yeah, one kind of large class discussion, which in both class periods that I did it with for my US history classes, every student did end up speaking and participating at some point. And I think part of it is, you know, making sure you have a question that a lot of kids are interested in discussing. But I think in the future, yeah, just to kind of give people more of a chance to really get immersed in the conversation, I would break it into like smaller, smaller group settings.
This is really engaging, this is exciting.
Good.
Thank you.
Are these kids a dream team?
Yeah, right.
Should be.
Yeah, for sure, for sure, I agree. So, yeah, we got some good ones, that's for sure. Good, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to Mr. Ziegler and his students. Now we're going to turn it over to Ms. Lisa Carroll, who is a French II and French III teacher at Carmel High School. And we have some students from her French class that are going to come up and sit alongside.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello.
Okay. Oh, boy.
Good. Hello, Larry.
And Ms. Carroll will be sharing with you a small slice of a larger unit focused on how do we communicate in a French café. So a very different type of driving question, but you hopefully will see some commonalities in terms of relevancy and authentic learning. So with that, Ms. Carroll.
Bonsoir, and good evening. Thank you so much for having me. I'm very excited to share a little bit of what we've been doing in French class. Our driving question is how do we communicate in a French café? So that was where we started. Today, we will be practicing an activity from French II. It's from our Semester Two Food Unit, so it's a lot of fun. This activity is a really great example of some best practices in the foreign language classroom, as well as showing some of the recommendations that you will hear a little bit later. So before we start on the activity, we are going to go through some of the background work up until it. So we always start with our standards, and so these are the world language standards that I used. The world language standards are actually very different from other content standards, because they are not language-specific. So they are not specific grammar points or vocabulary lists, but rather they are based on skills. So as you can see, one of them is the oral request for information, and use culturally authentic resources to reinforce and expand vocabulary. So because it's so communication-based, we can do a lot with it, and we can have a lot more fun with it, I think. Next is our unit overview, and I know that growing up, we, many, many years ago, it used to just be grammar, 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 grammar with a lot of vocab. We don't start that way anymore. So when we start a unit, we start with culture, and then we build in the grammar and the vocab and the pronunciation that we need for that culture. So for instance, for our food unit, we start by talking about cafes in France. What are cafes in France? What part do they play in the culture? How are they different from American cafes and restaurants? What food do they serve? And that gets us into some of our food vocabulary, which gets us into some of our articles and our grammar points and how to order food. And so it all builds on this idea of cafes in France. So it's a really great way to start, it's a really, really great way to get students engaged and excited about the topic. So for today, we have two learning targets. The first one is, I can identify different types of food in French. And the second is, I can order food at a French café. So I try to make my targets very simple, but also very applicable to what we're doing. My targets span several activities, and even sometimes a couple of days, depending on how wide the target is. But for this activity, it would definitely be important for students to master this target by the end, because this would be the final activity before their final oral assessment. And so these are our two targets that we're working towards today. The activity that I'm going to show you is a tic-tac-toe activity. It's actually the independent application part of the gradual release of responsibility. So in my classroom, this activity would be done independently by each student. However, today, I won't make you do that, you're going to work with students to complete these activities. The, some kind of great points of this activity is the final assessment, it is an oral assessment, but it's very authentic. And so what we do is, we have a food day in French class, and students bring in cuisine that they've made, French food from all over, and we eat food in class. And while students are eating, I go around and pretend to be a server, and they have to order food from me in French. So it's very authentic, because if you ever go to a French café, you will want to order food. Another really great point of this activity is student choice. So it is called tic-tac-toe. There's nine different activities that are available, and students must choose three in a row. And so they don't have to do all nine, so they get to choose which activities they'd like to do, which increases motivation. And the last thing is, it affords some opportunities with technology that some of you will actually get to participate in today. So working up until this activity, the first thing is, I wanted to make sure that each row was equal amount of work and time for management in the classroom, but I also wanted to make sure that it gave equal practice with the vocabulary. So for instance, one of our activities is called Duolingo. It's an app, actually, on your smartphone. However, I don't script that app, and so I have no control over which food vocabulary is presented. And so I have paired it with an activity that is categorized, where you have to categorize your vocab into categories of your choice, and working with every single vocabulary word. So a lot of thought went into the placement of each activity and which it is paired with. So I am actually going to let you free. In front of each student, there is a folder filled with everything that you will need. Unfortunately, you will not have as much student choice as my students will because of the time limitations, so I have highlighted or circled the activities that you will be doing. I will give about five minutes to go through and review those activities. You can ask the students any question, they've done all of them, and then I will be around to take your orders.
All right. Well, I'm Dave. All right, it's nice to meet you. So both of the package have vocab lists on it.
You'll split them up in half.
At this point, you'd be expected to know all these, and we would, we would do them. But obviously, you guys have been in class with us, so we have. And our first activity is graphic organizing. So we'll be taking the vocab words and we'll put it in the middle, so it'll look like this. You put your vocab word in the middle, so any of the vocab words, just write it in French. So then the first step would be to have a English translation, so that would be giving the most basic understanding of it. And then you go to categories. So by separating them into categories, you can, like, better understand by relating them to each other. So you could really, soda pop and water, you guys are both drinks, or something like that. Or coffee and tea in the same category. So we're going to do a little bit of that, and graphic organizers.
I want to have the car write the French word.
And I'm kind of going to turn these over to you, but here to help. The idea is, draw a picture and use it in a sentence, but the most helpful would be as many as you can. The English translation is category. On one side, you're going to write food names in French. On the other side, you're supposed to create a picture, especially, but the picture might take too long, so I guess we could do other themes. Do you have any plans on where to start? Or do you just want to go for the words?
I tried, once, the words are going to come in, and the English translation is here.
Yep.
There's some, like, you know, omelette, coffee, and olive.
Yes.
And then category would be breakfast.
Yep. You're going to write on one, in the French? No, no.
And use any sentence, like, au faise.
Sweet. So we could say, we don't have as much ability only using this vocab, but you could say, um, we draw pictures. Did she say, no, 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 on the backside?
I just went to, yeah.
Well, in class, we usually do with 20, but for time, we can just do.
Yeah, small bits, well, we have drinks and stuff like that. You talk, like, some other ways you could characterize them, or like, masculine or feminine, like, I can think of, like, beach.
Now you like that French word. Yeah, and several beaches, and through the museum, and sandwiches, stuff like that.
Okay, well, that's like that, right? Yeah. All right. Okay, so do you want to spend more time on this? Or we can move to the menu? The menu's cool.
Which we don't do too much, because it's not really.
All right, well, okay, so, it says create a menu, but this has already been done.
So it's a lot of, it's a lot of, yeah.
So what we did last year, last year when I was in Texas, we made a menu that would include drinks, appetizers, entrees. So we got hors d'oeuvres, hopkins bro, which would be entrees for us, dessert, salad, all which prices that you want to make up. And the idea would be that when Madame came around, we would, um, examination, we would order off farming and, I think that's enough for time. Or if you were more of an artistic illustrating kind of person, you could draw it out. But this would have been another way that you could have learned the technology. I can't draw. So I was, I was all for using.
Then, in class, we would take them and we made them out on the desk.
Acceptable.
We do these games of poker.
Um, I think that the idea was more to categorize, to make it look like a, look like a menu. I think that they would have to have certain categories, like, croissants, which I added that to. But the idea was that we would have, it would be large enough that you could order an entire.
Okay, so in class, we turned something over.
Like, upside down.
Okay, there used to be.
It was, it was really fun.
We liked to shake them up, like, so.
Yeah, so when Madame comes in, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Choose one like this, and we tried to say, au champagne. We'd say, we'd translate this to.
Anyway, so the last.
Or so much.
Then we'd see mushroom. So Madame, when she does this, she gets menus from cafes in France. And so I think our activity here is, we're supposed to.
These are the morals we have.
So whether it's here or if it's in France, or in the hotel.
Let me just pick up another one.
He lost, that's supposed to be ice cream.
All right, where you got that?
You don't.
I don't know where it's created again.
Yeah. You don't, it looks like it's your worst.
Oh!
But pronunciation.
Yeah, and then you, yeah, you found it, so you take the, at the end, more than count out how many you have, and whoever has the more cards wins.
So you can keep looking.
You just have to find.
So like, that's, that's sandwich, so then I say, okay, is this sandwich? Wait, this is.
And on the next time, if you see that sandwich, you want to pick something other.
Yeah, but I got lucky, it was sandwich.
And what does this, does that look like a sandwich?
Delicious food. I wasn't very.
That looks like a sandwich.
That would probably be the name of the restaurant.
Okay.
How do you say no thank you?
Uh, oui. So what we would do, we would already know these, so we would take this, and obviously there are going to be some things that are going to be unfamiliar, because we don't have the exact list of vocabulary that'll be on here. But pancakes is going to be a company that we would recognize. And we can look at these, de fromage, I know that means cheese, and de poulet, you can see poultry in that, that means chicken. And sucre means sugared, so sugared couscous. With raisins, dried raisins, which, raisins actually mean grapes, but dried grapes means raisins. So that would be one of them. I personally really like it when she does this, because it's one thing to look at this, but when you're looking at the menu that she gives us, it's a lot more.
Just when you get over there, just want to know they offer the menu in French.
Really?
Yeah.
I'm on the, um, they had the English translations, because the.
And I know that one of the, one of the things that I was walking through IU honors department is, like, going.
The menu was what she just came to us with.
The most family.
We did this as an oral exam.
Several of our students.
We got a menu, this is an example.
I, I sure.
We did it somewhere.
We got a menu, create these. And with these menus, she acted as our server. And I think, like, there, it's not new in the bigger cities.
So you have, those are potatoes. No, those are just potatoes, just pommes frites.
But you're more inside-wise.
If I could have your attention back up to the front for just a minute, I just have a couple of concluding statements. I hope that you had a lot of fun, and I hope that you could see how engaging and motivating and how awesome this activity is. My students love it every single year. There's a couple of things that I wanted to say. The first is that obviously this activity is going to take more than five minutes. And so in class, this activity would take anywhere between 20 to 30 minutes, and they'd probably take some of it home as well, it's just a lot of practice, but it's a lot of great practice. The second thing is that the oral assessment at the end, like I said, is a really big food day, we have a lot of fun with it. And so students bring in crepes, and Nutella, and gâteau de roi, and king's cake. And so we had a lot of fun last year, it was really, really great. And it, just the oral assessment, how authentic it was, I really enjoyed it. Me too, as the teacher. And the very last thing is that up here on the board, this is poll everywhere. And I love to use poll everywhere to informally assess my learning targets for the day. So for instance, I might show a poll that says I can order food at a French cafe. And then students would actually text in a code anonymously saying how they feel that they've reached that target. And so it's a really great way for me to quickly look at the results and see how the class feels. They have reached those targets. And so that helps inform the next day's learning as well. So that's kind of my final thing, and I just thank you so much for your time. And I thank you to my wonderful, wonderful students who came in to eat cookies tonight.
And what's a really good.
Thank you again, students, for coming. And you can go find your seat back in the audience if you like. And for our board members who are still present, we would like to take just a couple minutes again. Now, we've spent some time at the beginning of our time reflecting on the past. But now, based on the amazing experience that our teachers provided us today, I mean phenomenal teachers. How lucky are we and our students to have such wonderful teachers, Mr. Ziegler was. I don't know whether to be relieved or jealous that you have such a great experience because I don't know if I could have held up in some of those experiences you went through today. So, board members, what we'd like you to do right now with your red pen and just turn to talk with your partner one more time. Think about, we talked about your personal experiences. But, so now, based on what you learned tonight, what are some of the experiences and the differences and what you've seen in the practices of our social studies students and our world language students? So go ahead and jot those down in red or talk about them for just about two minutes.
This is like the center of.
Culture.
Sort of means thinking of the style of doing it. Relevant. This is. I love the units.
Here in particular, they were very much.
Yeah. It was a.
Regurgitate that. Oh, no, no. Yes.
Much of. I'm gonna say it now. Cooperative inter.
It's more like a debate. Or like, rather than just sitting in a class.
There's technology.
About thirty more seconds to wrap up your thinking.
Well, they would use it.
I think in the past, all you had to do is originate information.
But here, they use it for their research too.
Especially in social studies.
They were just substituting technology for. I thought that's all.
Well, in the assessment, transforms the assessments.
I'm not sure, I know that this is good, but I'm not sure if. I still think that there's probably a conversational component.
It's more, I say, a theme oriented.
I'm gonna interrupt your amazing discussions I can hear you having. And I know you're thinking many of the things that I'm thinking in that this is a very different experience, at least for me. And what I saw in walking around, this was a very different experience than you had as students as well. And we talked about the beginning, when Rachel started the beginning of our conversation, that we were going to reflect on the past experience, an authentic, have an authentic engagement and experience here. And now, we're gonna talk about the key shifts. Many of the key shifts that we're going to highlight were things that you have listed and read on your thinking maps there. But were also the recommendations of our program evaluation committee. That was made up of teachers, students, and community members. So we're gonna talk first a little bit about the social studies recommendations. And as a reminder, our program evaluation report is not just recommendations. This is the piece that we're going to work the most often from, but it's also all of the data we collected, what the literature tells us. All of our findings are all put together in a report. But for tonight, we're gonna just talk about the recommendations. So our first recommendation, as you can see, for social studies, really speaks to what are best practices in instructional strategy work. And I think we were really lucky and fortunate to have Mr. Ziegler with us tonight because he touched on many of these practices that we're going to continue to work on and grow in our social studies K-12 program for Carmel Clay School. So you saw a lot of, we had in-depth investigation of topic. So for certain, they did not just cover broadly the idea of industrialization. We also had some inquiry-based learning, collaborative learning, and at the end, debate. You engage in a Socratic seminar, which is a form of debate. Another recommendation of the committee was that we should be providing authentic opportunities for students to connect social studies content to their own lives, to their larger community, and to the world. I think that Socratic seminar, that question about minimum wage certainly would show us how the past relates to our present experiences. Another piece of this is an emphasis of critical thinking skills and emphasis of depth over breadth. So again, Mr. Ziegler really took students into an experience beyond just the broad content standards. A third recommendation of the committee has to do with literacy integration. In the past, we always talk about the importance of literacy in all of our content areas, no matter what we're talking about. And we've talked often about all teachers, our teachers of reading. But it's changed a little bit when we talk about our content areas. Specifically, Mr. Ziegler really did talk a little bit about this in that we have now standards grade six through twelve for disciplinary literacy. So they don't just, they're not just responsible for teaching the content. The standards also require that we teach students how to read in the discipline they're working in. So in this case, how do you read like a political scientist? How do you read like a historian? How do you read like an economist? Those are very specific reading skills that our reading, our social studies teachers bring to the table and need to teach in an authentic and a very intentional way. So this is one of our major recommendations for this next program evaluation. And the last three, I won't go into great depths, but this is really about how do we operationalize the previous recommendations? So what kinds of materials do we need to support those recommendations? What is assessment, both formative and summative, going to look like K through twelve to support those recommendations? And then also, what kind of professional development do we need to provide for our students? And for our teachers, sorry, for our teachers. So those are our social studies program evaluation recommendations. We're gonna pass it over to Rachel, who will talk about world language and wrap it up for us tonight.
Much like, much like social studies, the first program recommendation for world language deals with best practices. And the committee felt very strongly that this should be the primary recommendation focused around providing students with authentic performance-based assessments. You'll notice that rather than students just taking a multiple choice quiz at the end of learning about food in a French cafe, they were participating. And their oral performance assessment was Ms. Carroll coming around and assessing their oral performance related to that vocabulary. And all of that work in terms of grammar all led up to that final performance assessment. Also, formative assessment and student self-assessment, this was a common recommendation between both social studies and world language because we know that we need to have checks for understanding along the way, rather than just waiting to that, until that final performance assessment to determine what students know and what teaching needs to take place to make sure that they earn mastery. Another best practice in world language is immersion in the target language. We actually had two teachers that just presented this weekend at the Indiana Teachers of Foreign Language Conference. And the title of their session was keeping it in the target language. And they specifically talked about how to immerse students in the target language throughout class time. It's the closest thing we can get to taking them there, to the place where it is spoken as the primary language. And then, higher level thinking at all levels of proficiency and meaningful technology use. So we're not just using technology to replace something that can be done paper pencil, but we're using technology to really redefine and transform the tasks that are happening in the classroom. And so this work, a lot of this you saw highlighted in Ms. Carroll's lesson. But as you can imagine, this doesn't come easily or naturally. And so we're having lots of really exciting conversations with our world language teachers about how to make these things happen on a regular basis in the classroom. The next recommendation speaks to the fact that we need to have consistency among our Level One world language programs. You may be familiar with our middle school world language program. For the past few years, has had a quarter-on, quarter-off structure. And the program evaluation findings really clearly spoke to us that we needed to have consistency so that our eighth graders can take a full year of world language and be immersed in that language throughout the year. In one of our focus groups, a student described his middle language, or middle school world language experience as he lost his mojo every quarter, when he had a quarter off and he spent the quarter on the first few weeks of that next quarter just getting back into the swing of things. So we're gonna work to have a more consistent program at the middle school. The next recommendation is that middle school students should have the option to take a Level One of world language or participate in exploratory experience. We know that best practices for middle school students include providing them with lots of options. And this will enable them to explore culture and language of multiple languages before delving into that full Level One of the language. And then the last recommendation being that we would increase job embedded collaboration time for teachers because we know that if we want to have a vertically aligned world language program that sets students up for success at each level, that we need to have collaboration both horizontally and vertically with our teachers. So our next steps, we've had, we have our materials adoption committees that have convened. They're looking over the program evaluation recommendations. And then they're going to start the process of reviewing materials, making recommendations to the board of materials that they would like to see as part of our curriculum instruction and assessment for the upcoming years. Then we'll focus on curriculum mapping and professional development to support our teachers in those best practices. So we would like to thank our teachers and students so very much for being here this evening. And we also would like to welcome any questions at this time. Yes?
The social studies exam or test for I-Step is in fifth grade. So how are you preparing the students for the fifth grade test? Since they have to go through grades one, K through four before they ever get to that test? And some of the information that they learn prior to fifth grade, they probably will have forgotten. So what are we doing in that respect?
Well, the fifth grade test, as you know, is really about fifth grade for the most part. It's fifth grade social studies content. So the content, well, part of the program evaluation, one of the findings and one of the recommendations was that we really focus on skills as well as content and that we focus on depth versus breadth of content standards. So ideally, as we continue, as we look at our program and as teachers work with students K through four, they're developing the social studies thinking and skills that our students need in order to acquire the content and perform on social studies I-Step for fifth grade. It's a bit of a challenge because it's very content and standard specific for fifth grade, which is American history, where they don't really study, they study American history in fourth grade through the lens of Indiana. But it is very content specific for fifth grade, when we get to fifth grade I-Step.
For immersion, could you explain immersion and how extensive that is for the students? And also, my other question on that is, how are our findings on our AP tests and our students, how are they faring on the AP tests when they take world language? And what are they testing out of when they, when they start into college?
Okay, in regards to immersion, as you might imagine, we have a larger ratio of immersion in the target language in our upper level world language courses and a less ratio, or smaller ratio of immersion in our Level One courses. So although we do focus on immersion across all levels of proficiency, you, if you were to enter in a Level Four or Level Five French course, I could imagine that you will only hear French. You will only be reading French, only in writing French, but there's a hundred percent immersion. If you go into a Level One course, the ratio of immersion to English is a little bit smaller. Well, quite a bit smaller, I think, and I would let Ms. Carroll speak to this if I'm wrong, but I would expect that you would see more like twenty to thirty percent immersion in the target language in Level One. And of course, then as the year progresses, as they get to the end of Level One by the spring, then there's more and you might be more at a forty, sixty, fifty, fifty range. But we know for students, initially, it's important that we provide them with English, which gives them that comprehensible input to better understand the target language. Does that answer your question about immersion?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, if not, we could go, I could go further?
No, I'm just, I, I know immersion is important in understanding the language and how, and being able to actually speak it when you finally leave high school or you get your education in college. Because there's a lot of students who can read French and can understand French and listen to French and, you know, know what people are saying, but are not as able to speak it back or to have a conversation.
And one of the findings is that we do have a good, a nice balance of reading, writing, listening, and speaking happening. In our world language classes, that's something that we want to continue to work on, is engaging in all of those language domains, not just the reading and the writing. In regards to your question about AP, we, one of the questions that the committee asked during the questions of inquiry phase of the program evaluation process was, to what extent are our students college and career ready? And so, under that overarching umbrella of college and career readiness, we looked at our AP and IB testing data. And you can see the data statements in the full report. But what we found was that our students who did take an AP or IB course and chose and opted to take the assessment typically performed very, very well on the assessment, which would be a Level Four or, or a score of four or five on the assessment. We still have some work to do in terms of continuing to increase the number of students that choose to take Level Four or Five of a language. But what we found is those students who do choose to take the test are very well prepared.
Good, okay. And I have one more. You said that eighth grade students are given the opportunity to take a full year of a language?
Well, the recommendation is that they would have a continuous experience in the language. Currently, we're working under the structure of the quarter-on, quarter-off. As we move into setting up the schedule for next year, we'll be working with the, each of the middle schools to see what's, what's able, what we're able to do in terms of providing them with one year of continuous immersion in the language.
So that would just be the eighth graders? That wouldn't be the sixth or the seventh graders?
We would be looking at providing sixth and seventh graders with the exploratory experience. Options.
That would be a full semester of an exploratory or a, or a quarter-on, quarter-off?
We, there are different possibilities for how that might look. One possibility would be that we would have a quarter of Spanish culture, for example, and then a quarter of Spanish language. Then they could also try German culture, German language. So the idea being, we want to have many opportunities for students to try out the language and culture of various language, languages prior to taking the Level One.
Part of that's gonna be part of our middle school program evaluation.
Okay. Well, I figured it was coming up.
Yeah, that'll connect.
Can I just ask a clarification? So what you're, what your recommendation is, or this whole process recommendation is, is that there'll be exploratory experiences, options in sixth and seventh grade. And eighth grade will be one year for Level One, as would be in ninth grade if you took Level One.
Exactly. We wanna make sure that our students that take Level One as eighth graders are very well prepared to move on to Level Two as sophomores if they so choose. They may choose after taking Level One as an eighth, as an eighth grader, they want to try Level One of a different language their sophomore year. But in the event they want to continue along that path with the initial language that they've chosen, we want to set them up for success as they enter the high school going into Level Two.
That really kind of addresses what I was going to ask was, did, in the course of the evaluation, did the foreign language look at data to see how many students actually continued on in the language they started in middle school? How many switched out? How many even completed?
How many even completed in three to four years? And how, what their success rate was when they got to high school?
We did. We looked at, um, our eighth-grade students and looked at the data across all three of our middle schools, and looked at, did they continue on in the language they started? Did they switch to a different language? Did they, in some cases, redo Level One, which they had already taken in the middle school? And that data clearly indicated that we needed to, first of all, provide a continuous experience for them in the eighth-grade year, um, but then also to provide some options, because many of our eighth graders didn't necessarily know, um, in middle school, what language they wanted to take, and so, we wanted to provide them, um, with some exploratory options.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Yes?
First of all, just a, a comment that, uh, to the administration, I really appreciate, and I'm sure we all do, that workshops have become workshops again, not just a second business meeting. And to you folks, um, just, you know, watching these kids, and thinking about the, the different targets, the standards, and there's no way that I would have survived that as a college freshman. So, I, I think you, you both can expect me very well-prepared for college, and, and for being good citizens, too. The, uh, the quality of the questions and answers going back and forth, passing credit, I don't know, it's just, uh, very, very, very good. Um, I, I did have one, one, one question. What, what the old saws about language is that it's easiest to learn when, when you're quite young, and of course, I understand that, that this evaluation dealt with primarily the middle school and high school level. So, maybe this is a Dr. Dudley question, but i- is that question, uh, been settled most of all, as to whether we will have language instruction for elementary school students? Or is that something that perhaps future evaluations will consider?
Well, one of the things, as you will recall, we did have a Spanish program in our kindergarten through fifth grade, um, but the, um, purpose of the program was really more to provide them with that cultural experience of another language. Um, what the research will tell you is that, yes, um, when you're younger, it is, um, easier to pick up a second language. However, they have to have, it's, it's similar to the, um, recommendation, they need to have that continuous, um, exposure and practice. And so, the research would say thirty to forty minutes every day. Um, what we had in our elementary program was in the younger grades, we had, um, two times a week for twenty-five minutes, and then in the older grades, we had one time a week for fifty minutes, which was not providing them that language proficiency practice that they needed. Um, and so, that's where, you know, as we looked at the data and we looked at the best practices, um, the decision was made to, we would eliminate that, um, program and, um, focus then in the middle schools.
And just one other question, uh, we had mentioned, if, if I'd like to read this, uh, detailed report, where, where do I find that?
We'll have it posted online tomorrow on our website. Um, I believe it will be on the curriculum, um, in instruction area of the website, and I'm sure that we can get the link out to you in the morning. Yep?
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, I'd just like to reiterate, thank you. Thank you, everybody, the students especially, coming out. I'm sure you have homework and other things you'd rather be doing this evening, but we do thank you for joining us and giving us, um, you know, hands-on exposure to what you do every day in the classroom. So, thank you, and thank you to our teachers and our administrators who came out to, um, help us all better understand what you do, and we thank you for that. Um, any board members have any additional questions?
But I would also like to thank Pam for covering most of mine, so... She's welcome. She's reliable.
Okay, well, with that, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Very good.
Very good, John.
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, we'll keep that. This is me, this was really good.